Recording in progress. Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
My honest, oh, good, perfect. All right, if everyone, I know people are just leaving our chairs meeting and probably getting a soda or something, I'm gonna give everyone a minute or so before we get started. Who do I have virtual? Julia, you're doing finance tonight?
Yeah.
Terrific. Yeah, yeah, he told me.
You get an email to check in.
All right, everybody, if everyone can grab their seats. We're gonna be led in the pledge of allegiance tonight by Counselor Crinsman. And for the record, Counselor Crinsman is joining us on his 50th birthday tonight. So happy birthday. And if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Crinsman. I hope you had more fun on your birthday than just hanging out with us. So, folks, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Newton City Council. We are being both audiotaped and videotaped remotely. I have Counselors Lipoff, Baker, Mickley, Kalis, and I think that is it for the moment. It's Gentile as well, and Counselor Gentile remotely. Everyone else is in the room. I know Counselor Lovovitz will not be joining us tonight. We are going, and is Counselor Downs?
She's on.
Or not. Okay, Counselor Downs is absent as well. We're gonna start off with our first call of items, and then I'm gonna recognize Counselors Bixby and Oliver to come to the podium. We are greatly honored to have the Newton North High School Girls Volleyball Team here. They have a commendation for them. There'll be an opportunity for photographs. After we're done with that, we'll go to second call. We have three items on second call tonight. One is a Dalby Street item, and then two items relating to 386 Watertown Street. So we're gonna start off with the Land Use Committee, Chair Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President, and welcome volleyball players. The Land Use Committee met on March 4th. Page 55, item number 32-25, which was a request to allow a freestanding sign at 7 Hereward Road, was approved eight to nothing. Item number 33-25, which was to allow, a request to allow a system of retaining walls exceeding four feet in height at 124 Neshoba Road, was also approved. Item 34-25, which was a request to exceed FAR at 16 Pine Ridge Road, was approved, and the other items are on second call, which are Dalby Street and Watertown Street.
And do you want to go on to public hearings?
I would love to do that, too. I'd like to request or assign public hearings for items 54-25, 67-25, 69-25, and 68-25 on page 61. I'd like to assign those public hearings for April 1. And items 483-24, 480-24, and 481-25 are on second call, so we'll see where that goes.
Thank you very much, Chair Kelly. Vice Chair Oliver for the Zoning and Planning Committee, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. The report begins on page 56. Zoning and planning met on March the 10th. All items were held except for three appointments. Those were specifically items 44-25, reappointment of Ann Hostin to the Newton Affordable Housing Trust, that was approved eight to zero. Item 45-25, reappointment of Peter Sargent to the Newton Affordable Housing Trust, was also approved eight to zero. Item 46-25, the reappointment of Jennifer Pucci to the Newton, sorry, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, was also approved eight to zero. I would also like to remind the council and the public who is listening that this coming Monday, on the 24th, we have a public hearing for one item, and that is the buildout of the, to maximize the percentage of a new buildout or the front facade. So that hearing will be in this room on Monday at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Oliver. Next, I have our birthday boy, Chair Crinsman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, thank you, thank you, my esteemed colleague. Programs and Services Report is on page 58. Programs and Services Committee met on March 5th. We have one item, item 48-25. This was the request for ordinance amendment to update the city seal, which was approved by a vote of five to two. Again, for folks, this was the language that accompanied the city seal that we all approved. With that, I would move the report.
Thank you, Counselor Crinsman. Chair Grossman for Public Safety and Transportation, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report begins on page 58. The committee met on March 5th. We discussed two items that were both held. Just for reference, they regarded parking permit, fines, and fees, and edits we might want to consider, and that's an ongoing discussion.
Thank you, Chair Grossman. Next, I have Public Facilities Committee Chair Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was no meeting, and therefore no report.
Do you have a public hearing to assign?
Do. It is on page...
Page 63, Chair Albright.
63, thank you. So this is for a public hearing that will take place on Wednesday night, March 19th, and it's a request for a main drain extension at 132 Homer Street. It's Betsy Harper, 19 Fairmont Ave., Newton, petitioning for a main drain extension that begins at the end of the lane, the line drain manhole near, gives the details. And this will be heard on Wednesday night.
Thank you very much, Chair Albright. And Wednesday night's meeting is at 8:15, do you want to note that?
Yes, Wednesday night's meeting is at 8:15. I should also note that there is some confusion about this particular item that we just found out about this afternoon, so it may actually end up being held and redocketed, but don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Albright. Vice Chair Malachi for the Finance Committee, please.
Thank you. And can I get retro recognition for turning 70 two weeks ago?
All yours.
Okay. So, the Finance Committee met on Monday, March 10th. The first item to report is number 49-25, authorization to enter into a five-year contract, and that is for a deferred compensation plan. This is not to be confused with a regular pension plan. It's an optional deferred compensation plan that is not funded...
Could you speak into your microphone a little bit more?
Yes, yes. It's an optional deferred compensation plan that involves no city funds, and all employees are eligible to participate, but the city and the treasurer are the fiduciary. And this will be the first bidding of that contract since it was set up in the 1990s. That item was approved seven to zero. Next, we have number 50-25, authorization to expend $45,000 to settle a workers' compensation claim. That was approved seven to zero. Another 51-25, authorization to transfer and expend $49,000 to settle a workers' compensation claim. Both of those happen to be from the Public Works Department. That was also approved seven to zero. And we had 53-25, appointment of Patrick Song of Newton Center to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, and that was approved seven to zero.
Thank you, Vice Chair Malachi. For real property reuse, Chair Danberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no report.
Thank you, Chair Danberg. Now, I'm gonna invite Counselor Bixby and Counselor Oliver up to the rostrum, please. Can I have a motion to suspend our rules to allow the Newton North High School Girls Volleyball Team to step in the side of the rail? Move by Counselor Kelly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Come on up. All yours.
Yeah. Counselors, there.
Okay.
Do you want to...
Why don't I have my glasses?
Okay.
That'd be fun.
Let me see what works. It's okay.
Where do I begin?
You're all gonna stand well, so we'll get in the picture. Go ahead.
Okay, all right.
You can come up closer if you'd like, if you want to take pictures, please do. And there'll be opportunities when we're done as well. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. And tonight, we are honoring the Newton North High School Girls Volleyball Team for outstanding accomplishments in 2024. Whereas, the Newton North High School Girls Volleyball Team had an exceptional season, earning the title of MIAA Division One Champions. And whereas, the Newton North High School Girls Volleyball Team marked their third straight Division One Massachusetts championship title, and their fourth appearance in each of the last four years. And whereas, having lost only six games over the past four years, in the 24 season, the Newton North High School Girls Volleyball Team accomplished a 23-to-1 season record. And whereas, the team began the year setting the goals of win another and work hard, both of which were more than accomplished this year. And going off script, they told me again tonight they're hoping for it, so we'll look forward to next year.
Now, therefore, let it be known that in recognition of the Newton North, Newton North High School Girls Volleyball Team's unparalleled achievements in 2024, the Honorable City Council representing the entire city of Newton congratulates the members for their accomplishments.
All right, thank you, Counselors Kelly, Oliver, and Bixby.
Appreciated. All right, we have three items on second call. I'm gonna recognize First Chair Kelly to go through the first item, which is Dalby Street item. Oh, I'm sorry, we, you know, we're rushing to get through, and the clerk reminds me we actually have to vote on first call, so we're gonna call the roll, please. Mr. Matthews, go ahead.
Counselor Albright?
Aye.
Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Bixby?
Aye.
Counselor Block?
Aye.
Counselor Danberg?
Aye.
Counselor Gentile?
Aye.
Counselor Getz?
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Grossman?
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey?
Aye.
Counselor Kalis?
Aye.
Counselor Kelly?
Aye, except item 48-25, for which I vote no.
Counselor Crinsman?
Aye.
Counselor Leary?
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff?
Aye.
Counselor Lovovitz?
Counselor Lucas?
Aye, with the exception of 48-25, for which I vote no.
Counselor Malachi?
Aye, with the exception of number 48-25, on which I vote no.
Counselor Mickley?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye, with the exception of 48-25, which I vote no.
Counsel Laredo?
Aye.
Mr. President? Yes? Go ahead, Counsel Gentile.
I wanted to change my vote to aye. I forgot that I was intending to vote no on 48-25.
Duly noted, and you're still within time to do so.
Thank you.
Counsel Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to change my vote on 48-25. I would like to change my vote on number 48-25 to nay.
Duly noted. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Clerk or Assistant Clerk, will you announce the results?
Yeah, first call items, 22 to zero in favor, except for 48-25, where it was 17 ayes to five nays. And then 38-25, which was 21 ayes, one nay.
All right, that ends our first call. I think there was one you had 18...
17 to five.
17 to five, okay, because we have two absent. Okay. With that, we're gonna move on to second call. It's all land use, all the time, so Chair Kelly, would you tee up the first item, please?
If the first one is Dalby Street, which I'm not seeing on the screen, land use met on this and voted at the time Counselor Leary wanted to put it on second call, so I'm gonna let her describe the details of that.
That's...
But we voted to approve it, subject to second call.
That's fine. Counsel Leary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you might remember, we had issues with some folks who weren't aware of the second round of discussion after there were some changes made to this project at 49 Dalby Street, including moving from four units to three units, and a significant reduction in relief. So, there were a few neighbors, I reached out to seven neighbors, butters, or living on that street, including the president of the Non-Autumn Neighborhood Association. I did not hear directly back from any of them, except for the president of the Non-Autumn Neighborhood Association. Several of them had already said that they would have preferred a by right project. The president of the NNA thought that it was an improvement going from four to three. So, when the time is right, I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Anyone online? Seeing none, Counsel, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Oliver, forgive me.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I intend to vote no on this project. I still believe that this is an inappropriate project for this particular street. I attended, I think, two of the three, or one of the two, land use committee meetings on this. I'm well versed, not only with the neighborhood, but the project. And while I might be the lone holdout here, I will be voting no.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Counsel Leary, do you want to make a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to approve.
Is there a second for the motion? Counsel Kelly, second it. Let's call the roll.
Counsel Albright?
Aye.
Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Bixby?
Aye.
Counsel Block?
Aye.
Counsel Danberg?
Aye.
Counsel Farrell?
Aye.
Counsel Gentile?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
Aye.
Counsel Lipoff?
Aye.
Counsel Lucas?
Aye.
Counsel Malachi?
Aye.
Counsel Mickley?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver?
No.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Laredo?
Aye.
Motion passes, 20 ayes, one nay, and then one absent.
All right, we have two remaining items. I'm gonna ask Chair Kelly to report them out together. I'm gonna suggest that we discuss them together, but that we vote these two items as we must separately. Just want to remind everyone, you all should have received through Chair Kelly some information that we see from the Law Department about some of the legal standards, and also a formal notice of withdrawal from the council for the petitioner that we all received, I believe, earlier today. So, Chair Kelly, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna give a little background of this. It's a little bit more complicated than the Dalby Street project, so I'm just gonna go through it for those of you who have not been following closely the land use process. And I'm going to try and summarize some of that legal advice from the Law Department. Although Mr. Temple is here tonight to answer any questions we may have, I tried to explain it to a few people today, and they were still confused, so I'm glad we have Mr. Temple to help us with this. The Land Use Committee met on March 11th for a specially scheduled hybrid meeting to address docket items number 480-24, a request to rezone a parcel at 386-390 Watertown Street, from Business 1 to Mixed Use 4, and relatedly, but separately, item 481-24, to request, a request to construct a four-story mixed-use building with 13 residential units at the same address. This meeting was scheduled in order to reopen the public hearings and for the committee to discuss some new information that was submitted after the public hearing had previously been closed. The two new pieces of information included a transfer of ownership between the two ongoing owners that resulted in a name change, and financial information provided on the fiscal viability of the project. The ownership change was a technical issue that had been appropriately addressed through the submission of an updated ownership authorization forms, both two, I think, ownership authorization forms. Public hearings on both those items were opened, and like tonight, we discussed them both at the same time. The petitioner's attorney addressed their financial information, and the developer added to the discussion noting why the previously planned underground parking was not viable, and to dispel misrepresentations about himself. Public testimony was heard, the committee deliberated. The petitioner then requested to withdraw without prejudice on both items. The petitioner will submit the request in writing, which we've heard tonight that they have already done. The public hearings were both closed. Counselor Block motioned to amend to withdraw with prejudice, but after discussion with land use members, the Law Department staff, and other counselors, he withdrew that motion, and we voted unanimously in the affirmative on the request to withdraw without prejudice. I did send to some of you, I wasn't so clear about open meeting law on something like this today, so I'm not sure if everyone got it. Hopefully you did, but I'm gonna try and summarize what the Law Department told us. A special permit application can be withdrawn with prejudice, but the city doesn't need, the city council doesn't need to approve that. The petitioner could request that alone, without us saying anything about it, if that's what they wanted. A special permit withdrawn without prejudice means, without prejudice means that it may be refiled at any time, and the city council must vote to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. That's what's happening tonight, whichever way we vote on it. We need to vote on that tonight. The rezoning application has technically a different legal framework than the application on the special permit for the building. There is a special exception to the rule which says that if the planning board has recommended the rezoning in its formal written recommendations, that trumps anything the city council has to say about it. So because there's no action the city council can take tonight that would create a two-year prohibition on the zoning request, we don't really have a say, and that is how I understand Mr. Temple's advice to us. He adds at the very end of his note to me that he is comfortable sticking with the committee's recommendation to allow the withdrawal without prejudice. So I'll leave it at that, and let you all ask questions of me or Mr. Temple.
Well, Mr. Temple's not gonna participate in our discussions.
Oh, okay, but he's here if we need legal advice.
Right, but we'd have, we'd have to suspend our rules to allow that. Why don't we try to keep the discussion within, within the council? Counsel Albright, you put, I think intended to put both matters on second call, so I'm gonna recognize you first, and we'll take up comments from anyone else. Just colleagues, remember, this is a voluntary request by a petitioner to withdraw two items without prejudice. Chair Kelly just explained the effect of without prejudice on the special permit and on the zoning change, so I'd ask that we keep our remarks focused. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry for the confusion that was caused by the clerk's office and my request not to understand that it was for both items. So I wanted to start by saying I fully support this request for withdrawal without prejudice and plan to vote for it. But I made some notes for, notes for myself, because I've been thinking a lot about this particular topic and this particular item, because I don't think we've had a lot of large or controversial land use items in the last even couple of years. So I thought I, a lot of stuff came to mind that I wanted to just talk about and bring to our attention.
The petitioner then requested to withdraw without prejudice on both items. The petitioner will submit the request in writing, which we've heard tonight that they have already done. The public hearings were both closed. Councillor Block motioned to amend to withdraw with prejudice, but after discussion with the land use members, the Law Department staff and other councillors, he withdrew that motion, and we voted unanimously in the affirmative on the request to withdraw without prejudice. I did send to some of you, I wasn't so clear about open meeting law on something like this today, so I'm not sure if everyone got it. Hopefully you did, but I'm going to try and summarize what the Law Department told us. A special permit application can be withdrawn with prejudice, but the city doesn't need, the city council doesn't need to approve that. The petitioner could request that alone, without us saying anything about it, if that's what they wanted. A special permit withdrawn without prejudice means, without prejudice means that it may be refiled at any time, and the city council must vote to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. That's what's happening tonight, whichever way we vote on it. We need to vote on that tonight. The rezoning application has technically a different legal framework than the application on the special permit for the building. There is a special exception to the rule which says that if the planning board has recommended the rezoning in its formal written recommendations, that trumps anything the city council has to say about it. So because there's no action the city council can take tonight that would create a two-year prohibition on the zoning request, we don't really have a say, and that is how I understand Mr. Temple's advice to us. He adds at the very end of his note to me that he is comfortable sticking with the committee's recommendation to allow the withdrawal without prejudice. So I'll leave it at that and let you all ask questions of me or Mr. Temple.
Well, Mr. Temple's not going to participate in our discussions.
Okay, but he's here if we need legal advice.
Right, but we'd have, we'd have to suspend our rules to allow that. Why don't we try to keep the discussion within, within the council? Councillor Albright, you put, I think intended to put both matters on second call, so I'm going to recognize you first, and we'll take up comments from anyone else. Just colleagues, remember, this is a voluntary request by a petitioner to withdraw two items without prejudice. Chair Kelly just explained the effect of without prejudice on the special permit and on the zoning change, so I'd ask that we keep our remarks focused. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry for the confusion that was caused by the clerk's office and my request not to understand that it was for both items. So I wanted to start by saying I fully support this request for withdrawal without prejudice and plan to vote for it, but I made some notes for, notes for myself, because I've been thinking a lot about this particular topic and this particular item, because I don't think we've had a lot of large or controversial land use items in the last even couple of years. So I thought I, a lot of stuff came to mind that I wanted to just talk about and bring to our attention. So one of the reasons that I wanted to speak about this tonight is that I don't think that we have found enough ways for the protagonists in this project to really listen and talk to each other and compromise. And here are some of the ways that I think we could have done better. I think the Ward 1 councillors, my buddies, perhaps didn't facilitate enough conversation between the neighbors and the developer, not in the sense that they would tell the neighbors what to do or tell the developers how to change their project, but that the two sides weren't given enough opportunity to really talk to each other. And I hearken back to what we've done on, on land use on, with Austin Street and Trio, some huge projects, where there were a ton of meetings where people had a chance to talk. And I wish the Planning Department, by the way, would make it clear to developers that they should contact the Ward councillors to make sure that they know that there's a project coming along and they should facilitate this conversation. I would hope that civility rules the day for those meetings. The meetings that I intended unfortunately were full of people jabbing and, and lots of animosity, but perhaps it's because there were so many out-of-Ward people at those meetings, and I think maybe I was one of them, and I think I, I'll stay home the next time, because I don't think I added anything to the conversation, and giving the folks in Ward 1 a chance to talk would be good. I think that some of us also didn't talk to the Ward 1 councillors enough to learn why they supported the project and what was good in it. How would it be helped? How would it provide help for Non-Antim and why not the harm? It never helps to decide in advance, in my opinion, based solely on what the neighbors want or solely on what the developer wants. It really pays to listen to the conversation and come to a conclusion later, before, before you vote. I think that none of us, including and especially the Planning and Development Board, took the neighbors' complaints as seriously as they should have been taken. The threatening comment that was made at one of the meetings, that why don't we just rezone the whole Watertown Street, that threat did not help in this process. So we really have to think about the neighbors when we speak about these projects. We had a hard time separating the wheat from the chaff regarding neighborhood complaints. The worry that the neighborhood would lose local businesses in the name of progress was a real concern, and I think it should be a real concern to all of us. This particular project was filling a hole in the ground, so there wasn't going to be a neighborhood business loss by doing it, so that issue maybe wasn't as much a concern for this project, but it could have been for the, doing the whole of...
Councillor Albright, you're out of time. Would you like some more time?
May I have another minute?
Sure. All in favor of providing, Councillor Albright, why don't we say another minute thirty, so I don't have to interrupt you again? Please say aye. Aye, pose, go ahead, please.
But that brings me to the fact that with the VCD concluded, we said we would look at the manufacturing districts in, that were just, just outside the, the actual Non-Antim district, and that didn't happen, so that's a shame, and I think we really should make sure that that, that does happen at some point in the near future. I think this, we as a council should do more to make sure that local businesses are protected when there's redevelopment. I learned today that there's a federal law and a, and a state law about regulation, I guess, about protection of local businesses when businesses, an area is developed and a business has to relocate. So I think, I think a number of us docketed something at one point, asking the Planning Department to help us with relocating and helping local businesses, but nothing came of that, so I think we should go back and figure that one out and do something about it. I would hope that we would all listen to each other and to the neighbors and not feel threatened. The neighbors feel threatened enough to, to threaten a referendum, to stop the project, which really would have served no one. We can't sell all our disagreements to referendum, and I want to emphasize, those referendums serve no one. I'm hoping that we talk to and learn from each other in more effective ways than we did this time around. And as I said, I do plan to support withdrawal without prejudice, but I, I think there's, there's a lot of lessons to be learned from this particular project. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Councillor Albright. Councillor Leary, and then, did you want to speak? Okay. Councillor Leary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I agree with everything that Councillor Albright has spoken about. This project, which, you know, I found initially to be a fairly small project and a fairly straightforward project, and I erred in not looking more closely at the very beginning. And this also was a project that had stops and starts and over a seven-year period for... So we got stuck on a few things, including the zoning change, and really, you know, fear, some fear, and I realized that people are very protective of their neighborhoods and their village, and that's a great thing. You know, people want to protect what's there, and Non-Antim's a wonderful village, it's vibrant, it's got a lot of great businesses, and so I have to better understand that that's where that's coming from. What I was seeing was a, almost picture-perfect project to fill what was, what is a vacant lot with 13 units, three of them affordable, a commercial space for a business. I saw there a lot of opportunity. I saw 13 new families or individuals or couples living there, a new business, some new tax revenue, and a streets, streetscape, an improved streetscape. I couldn't really see a downside to it, and I guess I was sort of dug in about that, and I thought that this was something that through discussion and reason, we'd get through, and that didn't happen. So I did learn from this. But I would also ask that it was, all three Ward councillors did support this project for the reasons that I spoke of, and that if you're outside the Ward, it would be, you know, we need to talk more, and I should have reached out as well, earlier, when I saw what was going on. It's just one of those things that sort of got momentum and just got a little bit out of control, and I was caught off guard on how complicated and how difficult this project became, especially when we're looking at things like Northland and, you know, the 40Bs on Craft Street, which, you know, people are concerned about. This one seemed like a really nice project that would improve the neighborhood. So I learned from this, and I think we, I'm going to be a better communicator, and I'm just going to ask my colleagues to also make sure they reach out to Ward councillors. I will do the same thing if there's a project that I have a concern about in any other Ward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Leary. Councillor Block?
Thank you, Mr. President. In terms of lessons learned, I just want to offer an observation that I don't think it's an accident that this became so controversial because it included a zoning change. When special permits come before the Land Use Committee, 99% of the time, there is no zoning change involved, and we deal with them in the appropriate manner. Sometime there, there are disagreements, but in the end, those disagreements are unusual. But zoning changes raise other kinds of issues and have a different impact, both on the process and on the neighborhood. And I, I've talked to Councillor Oliver about considering a rules change. I've talked to actually a number of you about that, and I think that's something worth thinking about again. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councillor Block. Anybody else wish to be heard on this, either of these items? All right, seeing none, we're, oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Oliver.
Great, thanks for that. Sorry for popping my hand up a little late there. I could probably talk about this project for a very, very long time, but let's not. I do just want to say a couple of quick things, first of which, I think it went noticed by every single person in this room and a lot of people outside of this room. It was actually really fun being on the same side of, of a project with my fellow Ward 1 councillors. It doesn't happen a lot, so that, that was a lot of fun, at least while it lasted, right? I do want to reiterate, because I think I've said this multiple times, the conversation about the rezone, or looking at the rezone, or the manufacturing zone, the lots that are currently zoned manufacturing, is happening. It is happening. Might be a little slow, but it's happening. There are a lot of things to take into consideration there, as you might imagine. Ultimately, I, I think supporting this withdrawal, I never understood the with prejudice part, but without prejudice is the way to go here. I think that at the end of the day, everything that went on about this project, around this project, and the context of this project, ultimately, I have to applaud our, our builder in this particular case and their legal counsel. I think they're making the right decision for now. They, they should be withdrawing this project. There's just too much going on, regardless of what you want to point out, what you want to look at in terms of why. I think they ended up in the right place. I think we should take them up on that decision and deal with everything else as it comes back to us, because I think it will come back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Oliver. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, we're going to call the roll first on the zoning item, and then on the special permit. Although I think if we don't pass the zoning, the special permit could not go forward anyways, but in an abundance of caution, we're going to vote on both. Yes, Councillor Getz?
Are we not voting, are we voting out on the item, or are we voting out whether or not to accept the with...
We are going to vote to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of both items, just so we have a very clear record. Do I have a motion, by the way, to, to vote this out? Councillor Kelly, seconded by Councillor Oliver, we're going to, again, zoning first, special permit second, and we're going to, and if you're voting yes or aye, you're in favor of withdrawal without prejudice, and we're going to vote both items, just so we have a very clear record that both items have been voted on, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Assistant Clerk.
Councillor Albright?
Aye.
Councillor Baker?
Aye.
Councillor Bixby?
Aye.
Councillor Block?
Aye.
Councillor Danberg?
Aye.
Councillor Farrell?
Aye.
Councillor Gentile?
Aye.
Councillor Getz?
Aye.
Councillor Greenberg?
Aye.
Councillor Grossman?
Aye.
Councillor Humphrey?
Aye.
Councillor Kalas?
Aye.
Councillor Kelly?
Aye.
Councillor Kritzman?
Aye.
Councillor Leary?
Aye.
Councillor Lipoff?
Aye.
Councillor Lucas?
Aye.
Councillor Malakie?
Aye.
Councillor Mickley?
Aye.
Councillor Oliver?
Aye.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Laredo?
Aye.
Motion passes, 22 ayes to zero nays.
This is, we're going to move on to the special permit item. Do I have a motion to approve, Councillor Leary?
Motion to approve.
All right, second for that, Councillor Kritzman. Let's call the roll, please. Again, an aye or a yes vote is to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of the request for special permit. Go ahead, please.
Councillor Albright?
Aye.
Councillor Baker?
Aye.
Councillor Bixby?
Aye.
Councillor Block?
Aye.
Councillor Danberg?
Aye.
Councillor Farrell?
Aye.
Councillor Gentile?
Aye.
Councillor Getz?
Aye.
Councillor Greenberg?
Aye.
Councillor Grossman?
Aye.
Councillor Humphrey?
Aye.
Councillor Kalas?
Aye.
Councillor Kelly?
Aye.
Councillor Kritzman?
Aye.
Councillor Leary?
Aye.
Councillor Lipoff?
Aye.
Councillor Lucas?
Aye.
Councillor Malakie?
Aye.
Councillor Mickley?
Aye.
Councillor Oliver?
Aye.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Laredo?
Aye.
Motion passes, 22 ayes to zero nays.
All right, Councillor Kritzman, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned at 8:29 PM. Thank you all very much. Have a great rest of the evening.